We're all set? All right. Call B, 390th Regular Planning Commission of the City of College Place to Order. And let's begin with the roll call, please.
Brian Roll.
Here.
Monte Poyman.
Here.
Rando Brenness-Mourirou.
Here.
Scott Duncan.
Here.
Dennis Olson.
Here.
And not present at this time is Eileen Davis and Ken Lauterbach.
Thank you. So we have a quorum. We have the consent agenda, which consists of two items, those being the agenda for today and the approval of the minutes from our last meeting on March 19th. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as it presently exists.
So.
Moved by Commissioner Duncan.
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Brenness. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
And a vote for a team?
I'll pull in favor.
Or, or?
So it's five zero?
Yep.
Okay.
All right, thank you. So our regular agenda consists of the sign code and the Uniform Development Code. Mr. Dorn, you want to start us into the sign code?
I do. Why don't I wait just one moment? This is something that... Your timing is perfect. Okay, let's go ahead and... I was hoping John was going to be here with a pen, but we're going to go ahead. Oh, there they are. Here's my good old work. So, sign code. This is, I think you maybe are very aware from your previous discussions, can be a very sensitive subject. It can be one that has a lot of interest and it is one that is legally complex. And I can say it is the one aspect of regulations that particularly in light of recent court decisions, I just absolutely don't get. And every time I talk to an attorney and I read, I cannot see how communities are, what they have done complies with what we've been told that we need to do. So I don't think I'm alone in the confusion and the frustration that we're all grappling with right now. So I want to provide a little background information and context to the confusion, but then I want to move to a series of specific questions that I'd like to get some feedback and direction to kind of help me navigate through this otherwise confusing topic. There are basically three categories of signs. There are signs that are exempt, there are signs that are prohibited, and there are signs that may be permitted. Exempt signs are signs that are not governed by the city's regulations and there are certain types and classes of signs, things like historical plaques and markers, legal notices, signage that might fall into some of the categories of constitutionally protected forms of free speech. So there is a list and generally pretty well accepted number of signs where we just say they aren't subject to city regulation. Then there is a class of signs that are typically prohibited. And there also is kind of a body of, or a consensus around the types of signs that are prohibited. One type of sign, for instance, are signs that, that meet the judicial standard for obscenity and the courts have actually gone to the point of saying, this is how we would define obscene. And so there are certain types of signs by their content that would meet that standard and they are not permitted. And there may be other types of signs that are prohibited. One example that may be prohibited in some communities and not in another is billboards, for instance, and we'll talk about that more in a moment. But then there is a third category of signs, which are permitted signs, signs where, subject to certain conditions and to certain regulations, may be permitted in certain zones and they're subject to things, standards of things like the height, the type of sign, the material it's made out of and things like that. So exempt, prohibited, and permitted signs. Now, there is within the world of permitted signs, there's two kind of further categories or classifications. One is temporary signs and the other is permanent signs. And as their names suggest, temporary signs are signs that are not, are not designed or intended to be attached permanently to a building or to the ground and, and as a result, are intended typically not to be on permanent display. So there, there's some kind of duration or lifespan to them in some sense versus a permanent sign, which is designed and attached to a building or to the ground, is intended to be permanent. So temporary and permanent signage. Temporary signage tends, but not always, to not require a permit. There still may be standards, but as long as those standards are met, then they can be displayed. But permanent signs almost always are governed by a series of regulations and we're going to focus on this and this tonight. What further complicates things and this kind of this next level is where things really kind of tend to get confusing is within this area, there is another distinction to be made, which has to do with signs that do not have a commercial message, no commercial message or content, and signs that have commercial messages or content. So driving here, for instance, I saw a yellow sign that was stuck in the ground and it said something like, "Community service breakfast" or something like that on Sunday at a certain place in time. That's an example of a sign that does not have commercial content. It's a non-commercial message advising people about a community event. Commercial signs, on the other hand, there are plenty of them and we're going to familiar what those are, but they involve typically the buying or selling of goods or services or, or something of that nature. And historically, the regulation of signs has been recognized as legitimate police power of a city. It's based, the factors are, there has to be a compelling government interest, has to be a reason to regulate signs and the generally accepted reasons include things like to protect the public health and safety, so that signs aren't out in the middle of the roadway, for instance. Other reasons for regulating signs would be to protect property values, to protect the aesthetic character of the community, if you will, those of all that kind of recognize as legitimate government purposes or compelling interest. But regulations of signs have also been tempered by some things like expressions of free speech and recognition that signs perform important public services and perform or provide an important economic benefit. So there's always been this balancing of interests. Where the whole thing got thrown on its ear was when the US Supreme Court a few years ago made a decision in which they said that despite all this history and all this framework and all this practice, what the court said was that in regulating signs, cities could not take into account the content of the sign. It had to be content neutral. And that has proven, that's what drives me crazy because so much of this is, how can you know what to do unless you can read the sign? The court said, "You're not supposed to read the sign, but you can regulate it based on things like where it's located and what it's made out of and its size, but you can't, you're supposed to be neutral or not make distinctions based on the content or favor one type of sign, content of one kind of sign over another." But when they made that decision, there were also some... It wasn't a unanimous decision and there were other affirmative decisions that were different than the main one, and there was dissenting decisions and there have been subsequent decisions and there has been just this kind of chaos about what we're supposed to do and how to do it. And there is kind of an emerging consensus that what the court really meant to say, and wanted to say what they really meant to, why didn't they just say that? But what they really meant to say was that we don't think that cities should read signs when they are regulating non-commercial signs because it's that area of non-commercial signs or ones with non-commercial messages is where you're closest to the freedom of speech issues, that there isn't a freedom of speech when it comes to commercial signs. And so the, a lot of folks have kind of inferred and, and some of the dissenting opinions kind of added on to it. So what we really meant was just signs without a commercial message, which makes it a little bit easier, but it's still confusing because we're not supposed to read the signs, but you're going to see in a few minutes, a whole bunch of instances where you end up having to read the signs in order to do things, or some ways where communities have really done something that is, seems to me to be a pretty transparent way of stepping around the admonition not to read the sign. So that's, that's the confusion and the kind of the craziness that we're dealing with. So let's start with temporary signs and talk about temporary signs. And, and with respect to temporary signs, we need to think about temporary signs in the public right of way and temporary signs on private property. Why? Because in addition to the US Supreme Court decision, the Washington State Supreme Court made a decision many years earlier, but the state Supreme Court made a decision and said cities cannot prohibit political signs in the right of way, or at least that portion of the right of way from the property line to the back of the curb, sidewalk, or to the back of the curb if there is no sidewalk. So in that zone, kind of outside of the travelway, the Supreme Court said you can't prohibit political signs there. In effect, they've said that's kind of a free speech zone, if you will. Now, they said, you, you can regulate signs, you can't put political signs in the road, you can't put them on the sidewalk, they can't extend over the road or the sidewalk, they, they can't be in median strips or in roundabouts, they can't be in clear sight in areas or zones, they can't impede turning movements, so they've qualified it quite a bit. But that area between the property line, the back of the curb, or the back of the sidewalk, that's kind of a free speech zone. So since the state Supreme Court said that, and the US Supreme Court said, in effect, there is no such thing as a political sign, because you'd have to read it to know that if "Vote for Joe" made it a political sign. So for us, what that means is that what we've always known and thought of as a political sign is actually a temporary sign with a non-commercial message displayed in the public right of And the courts have said that you need to treat all signs equally in that regard. So whatever we permit for political signs, we have to permit for other commercial, other sign, other temporary signs with non-commercial messages that would also may be displayed in the street, in the right of way.
So we can still have some regulation as to size or other things with those political signs?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. But there used to be, for instance, provisions that said that you have to pull your political signs and pick them up within 10 days after the election. And many cities still have that requirement, but Municipal Research and Service Center, for instance, which provides legal advisory services to cities, have said, "We would recommend that you not take, we recommend you take those provisions out of your ordinance because if anybody challenges you on them, you wouldn't be able to enforce that."
Yeah, there were also ordinances that said you could only put political signs out X number of days before the campaign season. If you remember, last year, I think there were a ton of letters to the editor regarding that. And I think Tim Donaldson, Walwal's attorney, actually wrote a piece, kind of explaining that, yes, we, I think we have, they have that in their code, but they're not enforcing it because it's not enforceable. And so I think that addressed it and revised that.
Was there no ability to put a time limit on that?
The advice that cities are getting now is that if you have those provisions and if you're challenged, be prepared to have those provisions invalidated. So they may still exist, but the advice is, I know of at least one city in Eastern Washington that still has regulations that say political signs in the right of way are prohibited, along with any other temporary sign. And the city council was advised by the city attorney when they adopted the regulations that, that in his opinion, that did not meet the test of the Washington State Supreme Court decision, and they said, "Thank you very much. We're going to do it anyway because we've received a lot of complaints about political signs. This is what the community wants. And if one of the political parties wants to, you know, take us on, then let them do that. But we think it's important and so we're going to make a statement and to take notice, challenge them and they don't have to make legal signs there." But they're, they kind of stand alone in that regard. So political signs tend to be things that are attached to a stake or now those kind of aluminum prongs, and there tend to be smaller signs, although there's some that can be as big as four by eight, and they tend to be things that can be easily poked into the ground and, and easily retrieved, although I did, for instance, see on my drive down here today, a, a political sign that was bigger than four by eight, that was attached to a barn, that was left over from, maybe, I don't know, maybe the 2016 governor's election?
Do you know where I seen or something?
Bill Ryan.
Oh.
Basically. And, and I don't know if it's a sign or maybe in this case, it's patching a hole in the side of the barn. So if a city can't prohibit that type of sign, that means that other signs without a commercial message of a similar type also need to be permitted, which is why then, for instance, that sign that I saw for the, the community breakfast would be permissible. So.
Yard sales?
We'll get to yard sales. Yard sales actually are a sign with commercial content, so we'll deal with those separately. These are signs with non-commercial messages. We're going to deal with in a minute, real estate signs. They also have a commercial message. And one of the things I researched, has any city found a way to be able to classify real estate signs as a sign with, with a non-commercial message? By their nature, they're commercial signs. So we're going, both of those that we're going to hold for a minute. So this would be, and so it also then includes things like student painters or, you know, other kinds of commercial signs that you might see of a temporary nature. This is signs with a non-commercial message. So it could be the community breakfast, it could be church service on Sunday, it could be freshman orientation at the university or something maybe. So in the draft we have right now, we have some standards to govern these type of signs. And we say things like, they can't damage the landscaping, they can't be, you know, they have to be like on a stake that you poke in the ground, so they can't be like on a fence or on a wall or something like that, some size restrictions. So we have a number of things. The question I have is, is there a need or a community benefit to allow temporary, any other kind of temporary signs, such as a temporary A-frame sign with a non-commercial message in the right of way? We'll deal with A-frame signs or sandwich board signs that deal with, you know, bakery open in a few minutes. But is there, are there community events or other kinds of things that might be advertised with a non-commercial message that occurs on A, sandwich board A-boards? I know in one community, for instance, they have, they put out some A-board signs that say Daddy Daughter Dance this Friday. So they, there is some...
We have them for our farmer's market.
Okay.
But is that a commercial or is that a community event?
That depends. And that's a great...
I don't, but you gotta get into reading it though.
Yeah. If it's, if it's a city's farmer market, then it would be considered non-commercial.
Well, it'd be considered a public, I think, a public thing anyway.
Yes.
That's exempted as anyway, or, you know, the city could do pretty much what they want.
So any other kinds of, I mean, so I put in a provision in there that's, that would enable A-frame signs, but I, I, I need to check to see if we would need to go down there because this is going to be complicated enough as it is. Anything we don't need, we can take it out, it's just fine. So are there any examples other than just a truly a temporary sign that would need to be in the right of way?
Are we talking right of way only?
Mm-hmm. Just that, that zone from the property line to the back?
Well, you know, lots of weekends, there's the box with the painting that says, of course, of course, commercial.
That's commercial and we'll get to that in a minute.
Just a box placed in the right of way somewhere.
Yep.
You might have a little temporary sign that says parking with an arrow or something like that.
Should be, yep.
Or, the other thing I'm thinking of, but this gets into another factor, be advertising this at a particular event at a location.
Yeah, I mean, so farmer's market, I mean, I guess if the, if maybe one of the schools...
The car show, maybe they might put up some stuff.
Well, I can see some that I've seen, for instance, like somebody's baby shower, right, and says like Brown's Baby Shower, that direction, or, you know, events like that that might be a family or...
Weddings.
Mm-hmm.
Or church program.
Yep. Yep.
Maybe a better question is, have we seen things, signs that we don't want to see in?
In the right of way.
That would fit that A-word description. I can't think of it.
So I'm kind of listening, based on conversation, I'm kind of inclined to leave it in for now because it, it, it would cover something that if it came up, it's there. But we're talking about things that are limited to non-commercial messages in that...
Can you, but can you limit it since, since, so we're talking about an A-board, right? And so now it's in the sidewalk, not on the edge necessarily.
We're going to hold on to, hold on to the A-boards.
Well, you do have it under your temporary signs.
Well, because I was going to say, then, you know, we need to have some regulation on, if we're going to allow them, duration or something.
Yeah. Yeah. And, and the duration things...
Can you scroll down to the bottom of page seven or the top of page?
It is on commercial messages, being able to regulate the duration is clearer than on the non-commercial where the courts have basically said, "No, you can't, you know, you can't do that." So you can't say, "Pick it up after the event is over" or something like that. On the commercial side, they've been more accepting and saying things like, "A sandwich board sign can only be displayed when the business is open," or "An open house sign can only be displayed when there actually is an open house in the age of its presence." And so regulation of duration, non-commercial messages tends to be seen a little bit differently. Okay?
Does that mean you could say something like, "All temporary signs must be in, in high quality condition or they need to be removed?"
You could rescribe the materials. Yep, you can say...
You know, if they're, if they're left there long enough and they get to be yucky looking, you can, they should be expected to be gotten rid of.
Yep. Potentially, there's, there may be a slip, yes.
It puts a timeframe on it without putting a timeframe, is what I'm saying.
Yeah. So the codes say things like durable materials such as this and this and this, and that they have to be maintained. And yes, so there is a point where you could say that it is not adequately maintained or that it's deteriorated, condition is, constitutes a threat to the health and safety. So there are some enforcement things you can do. But all of this with respect to the non-commercial messages all came about because it was an instance where it, in a city where there was a church that didn't have a permanent home. And so they were always kind of moving around and so they relied on the temporary signs to be able to direct people and that's where they kind of butted heads with the city and after a point, they just couldn't reach a reasonable agreement and went to court and everything kind of fell apart.
So Greg, under four, under temporary signs with non-commercial messages, E, for E, you have temporary signs shall be attached at the stake, blah, 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 pushed into the ground, or shall be A-frame.
Right. Yeah, so I've written, I've, I've put that in and what I was questioning was, should I leave it in? And based on the discussion, I'm inclined, I'll just leave it in for now.
Although I guess I'll, I'll opine that I'm inclined, given what we've been discussing, to say that they shouldn't be in it because if you can't, I mean, there's commercial purpose, so we can review those, like real estate signs or something, open house. But if it's non-commercial and it's an A-frame and they put it there, and if it's questionable whether we can put time limits and actually have them removed or, you know, put some other requirements, maybe we shouldn't have them at all.
Have a fender strip and have them all around that or whatever?
Yeah, so, you know, they can, they can, they can put it on their, obviously on the... obviously on their private property or something, you know. But as far as putting like on the sidewalk.
Yeah, well, let's hold, let's, I mean, we're going to have an expanded discussion of A-frame signs. So let's, let's hold those because it.
See it, since it can't be on the sidewalk.
Yeah.
What do you, what do you do in an instance where, I mean, this is extreme hypothetical. But along a lot of our streets, we have, you know, six to a foot behind the sidewalk that is right of way. That's Monty's front yard. What if I want to go out there and put a temporary non-commercial sign that says Monty is, you know, nuts or whatever?
Yeah. Two different questions, but they're both good ones.
The question whether Monty's nuts?
That's a third one. I mean, you could have on, on, on your own private property, signs with a non-commercial message such as, my neighbor is nuts. You can do that. And you maybe even in some places may be able to have as a constitutionally formed, protected form of free speech, you may be able to do that even in some public spaces and, and areas. But the question of the, that, that zone that's right in front of somebody's property, that, that's more complex. Now, the city of Yakima does have a provision that says that temporary signs with a non-commercial message may be displayed in that zone, blah, 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 with the permission of the budding property owner.
Well, I kind of like that because we have, we have some intersections. I can think of Lampertian College Avenue where we, at the north, the northwest corner, there's a lot of right of way there in front of Harold Lund's property. And their house is up on the hill and they got a bunch of shrubs. If I lived there, I wouldn't want all those political signs in front of my property. But they're, they're there and nobody seems to do anything about it. And it seems like the property owners should have some say.
Especially if they're responsible for maintaining that area.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which is mostly the case.
Yeah, especially if they have to maintain that area.
So.
Or if they actually do maintain that area.
And these.
We can, Yakima has done that. And, 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 and if that's something you're interested in pursuing, which I think has, when I saw it, I said, this is interesting. And I started to put it in. I did, I took it out and went back and forth. But if that's something you want to pursue, then what we would do is sit down with the city attorney and get her on the phone to talk to the Yakima city attorney to, to tell us more about how you were able to go down that path and what did you conclude about that? So we can, we can pursue that. I could see some enforcement challenges with that. But I could also see it being self-enforced because if somebody, if Monty didn't give permission, he could walk out and rip it out of the ground. So, I mean, because if, if the temporary signs don't have a permit, how does the city know if it's there with somebody's permission or not?
Right.
That's, that's where I see the problem as being. But if it, if it says that, that means Monty could go and rip it out.
So the, the thing is, I see it with a lot of these, especially the non-permitted signs, is that it's a mechanism for the city to be able to enforce in case there's a problem. Because, you know, I can just see, I mean, we're not going to get rid of the person with the box that writes, you know, garage sale over here. I mean, they're still going to pop up. And there's no dedicated staff that's going to go around every weekend just picking them up or trying to figure out.
No, we do that on Mondays.
Yeah. So, so I think it's more like, okay, you know, somebody just fed up because somebody's putting signs in front of their house and something they call the city or, or some other enforcement issue. And the city has some teeth to go and take some action.
And the property owner goes out with their own sign that says no signs.
Well, it could empower, you know, you can, you can tell the citizen, hey, if that's placed in front of your property without permission, I mean, you have the right to remove it.
Yeah, right.
The code says you can do that. But it also would help us deal with, there occasionally are the perpetual yard sales that go the entire summer in there. So then you can.
Yeah.
Ironically, I'm in the midst of all this and we get a telephone call at home this weekend. It's on behalf of a candidate for mayor of the city of Spokane, asking if, if, if they could put a sign in front of our house, not in our yard, but between the, the curb and the sidewalk where there's a median strip where we, you know, mow and maintain it. And it happens to be highly visible. And they said, hey, can we come put a, a political sign in, in, you know, in your yard? But they did call and ask. And presumably, you know, they'll do something. You know, if we say yes, presumably they'll do something like, give us a card or something like that, the sign that says that we gave them permission. So if anybody ever complained, it'd be able to say.
Well, so then the next question has to be is, what if somebody sees that sign and doesn't ask and just puts their own political sign? Especially if it's a political party you don't like.
Mm-hmm.
You know, are you allowed to say no? Are you allowed to say yes one time and no the next time?
Well, that's where it gets into the issue of whether we have the permission or not. And so I, my sense is that that's an attractive feature. And we'll do some follow-up on that to see if we can, you know, kind of, you know. There's not going to be a definitive yes or no. It's going to be to explaining to you and to the council, this is what the best political advice is on it. And this is what the potential consequences are. And this is what cans of worms that may open if any.
Right.
So, okay, so now.
Solve that one.
Yes. So let's continue to set aside sandwich board signs. Okay? But we're going to go to temporary signs with a commercial message in the right of way. And the courts have said, not sure how, but I'm not complaining, that cities can regulate and prohibit off-premise commercial signs. So there is, unlike political signs and things that are similar where there's an obligation, the courts have said, you don't have to permit commercial signs, temporary commercial signs in the right of way if you don't want to. If you're going to, you have to be consistent. But you don't, you don't have to. And, and so the way that written the code is, is that there are no commercial signs, temporary commercial signs permitted in the right of way. And my question is, can you think of any situations or instances where it would be appropriate or you would like to see them in the community? With the caveat is that that might open up Pandora's box and we might not be able to differentiate. If you say, yeah, if it's advertising music lessons, we're okay with it, may not be able to differentiate based on, on the message or whatever. So can you think of any commercial signs, temporary, that would be appropriate for the right of way? Ken?
Oh, yeah. Any, any new business. You know, we're trying to get businesses in this community. And it would be nice if some of these businesses had a way of, right there on the highway or something, be able to put a temporary sign. Opening our doors or, you know, grand opening, so-and-so, come see us. You know, I could see that being beneficial to a, a new business for our community. There you go, Pandora's box.
Yep. Because if it says things like grand opening or something, it could also say.
Massive sale.
Same old stuff, just costs more.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly right.
Now, I'll also add that a real estate sign, it is considered to have a commercial message. And so any real estate sign that was not on the property, any real estate sign that was in the right of way would fall into this, potentially into this category.
And that's not unusual either because you have them that where they're down at a big, long driveway and you're trying to get people to go down there to, to see the house or, or directional signs or something. So, yeah, I consider.
So it's not clear to me that if real estate, if, if real estate signs are permitted in the right of way, that a city could prohibit other kinds of commercial signs. So that also would require some collaboration with the city attorney. But if real estate signs are permitted in the right of way, that may mean that other commercial signs have to be permitted, temporary signs have to be.
The way we were regulating it in the, in the previous draft that we were working on was that we required their removal a certain number of hours after the event. So the open house, you could only place it, I think it was the morning before. You had to remove it a couple hours after the open house. And then I think we were, we were requiring that those temporary signs be of the A-frame nature. So.
And also I think we, we were thinking that we were also saying there was a maximum, right? I don't remember if it was one or two.
I don't remember if we got to that level of detail.
I don't remember that one either.
I mean, that, that is another possibility is to regulate the.
We did talk about that. Yeah, we did talk about quantity on the premises. So, you know, like the, the quickie mart on the corner could only have.
Well, that's different though. That, that was a business. That was an A-frame sign in front of the business.
That's the only quantity one that I remember talking about.
Yeah.
So basically you're saying, from what I remember before, so you got to treat them, all businesses basically the same. So if it's a real estate agent business and we're allowing an A-frame that says open house today or whatever, then we could potentially have to allow the ABC Books to put a sign that says sale today.
And, yes, and, and, and we could not call it a real estate sign. We could, would call it a, a, a temporary commercial sign may be displayed in the right of way, subject to the following conditions. And you could then say, it must be A-frame. It must be removed with, you know, within X hours of the event or the closing of the business. Whatever, there are some conditions. And there might be a place where you go too far. But generally speaking, that's okay. If, also could say none, but that would mean no real estate signs in the right of way either.
Could, could you require for the sign itself to be permitted by the city? Like that, okay, you need to bring your, your A-frame sign and we put some sort of sticker, you know, permit number something. Where I'm going with this is, and then you can say, okay, we're only going to permit, let's say, three per business or whatever per person. And so that way we know that at least ABC Books only has three that they can put out. And he only has three that he can put out on the weekend.
Well, we are, so there is a, there is a liability by having these signs out in the right of way. So we do have, we, we got counsel to approve a fee resolution that includes a fee for A-frame signs. And then that, if you, we haven't implemented it yet, but it's been approved. And so if you want to put a A-frame sign out in front of your business, you would have to get an annual permit. And you would have to provide the city with proof of liability insurance for that sign. So we could do that as well for, for any temporary sign that goes out there. You make it be an A-frame sign. You condition it, it's removed at night, blah, 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 special events, and require that they have liability insurance.
We would have to ask the city attorney whether the city could require temporary signs with a commercial message to have a permit, but not require temporary signs with a non-commercial message. You know, not require them to have a permit. I think the answer would be, yes, you can make that distinction because I think the courts have said that you cannot, you can be more restrictive of commercial signs, but you can't be more permissive, more permissive than non-commercial signs. So I would think, my guess is that we could find that, yes, a city could require temporary commercial signs to have a permit and not require the temporary non-commercial signs to have a permit. So the, 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 the Easter breakfast signs could go up without a permit, but you could require the.
Well, I don't like that. I don't like that at all.
But it would have to be all commercial temporary signs. You can't say that, because you can't base the, the, the regulation on reading the sign. So you can't single out real estate from others.
So, I mean, I mean, you could have it where the temporary ones don't, just commercial or non-commercial messages don't require permits. As long as they're temporary, as long. The, the problem becomes is getting the message out, you know, removal, those, those sort of things and communicating that to the person that's doing this temporary thing. But with the real estate industry, they've been, my experience of, gosh, it's probably been eight or nine years ago, when we had, we had a blind lady trip over a real estate sign. And we just, we communicated, we got ahold of the real estate, the local real estate association. And we sent them a letter, explained it to them. And Melissa Tates was on our planning commission at the time. And she actually presented to them and explained what our concerns were. And so the real estate industry started making sure that they weren't putting them in the road. They weren't putting them in the, in the pathways on the sidewalks. They were, and if, if there was no area outside of the sidewalk, they, I'm assuming they're contacting the adjacent property owners because I've seen them, you know, on, in somebody's yard on a corner and things like that. So they've been responsive. So getting the message out to, to the realtors has been relatively easy and well-received and respected.
Well, in RAs frame signs, the expense of them is, you know, you don't leave them overnight. I don't want somebody walking around. I pay over fifty dollars a piece for my signs and I built them myself. You know, so, yeah, that's, it's not some cheap A-frame thing that somebody put together, right?
So, you know, yeah. Let me just add one thing in the grand old is, I mean, I've raised a question in my own mind of to what extent should real estate signs even be regulated by the city? The industry has, and the individual businesses have, have, have an interest and they also have an expense. If you have limited resources, do you really want to put them there? But there are reasons to do that. And so, you know, where do you balance it?
And, and again, I think it comes back to some of these regulations to be able to enforce when there's a nuisance, right? So, and, and that's partly why I'm saying we can permit them. At least then we can say, okay, this one doesn't have a permit. And, okay, that, that's easy enough. I mean, you know, if, if somebody's putting a whole bunch of signs and. It's, you know, like with the real estate signs, I think it's because, you know, they're well-made and, and, and there's a cost and it's part of their business. They don't want a shabby-looking sign out there. And, you know, they usually pick them up and so forth. It's some of these other signs that usually are not really the A-frame and the other more cheaply signs that you see around where like, you know, you have rodents call this number, right? And they get plastered all around. Those are the ones that frankly, to me, are more of a nuisance. Uh, those are the ones that frankly to me, uh, are more of a nuisance and that, you know, we need to then basically say, well, okay, those guys are commercial signs, you can't have. You know, you can have this kind of commercial sign and we can somehow limit the numbers and somehow permit them or something so that there's some man, you know, some management of them so they just don't get, you know, out of hand, but.
Let me ask, if we outright prohibited temporary signs in the right of way, you just didn't enforce those signs that are placed by a real estate?
That's the way the code is right now.
We open ourselves up to.
If you then, I'm, I'm, I'm speculating, but if you just turned a blind eye to real estate signs, but then went and, and pulled the sign for, um, Dan the Piano Man, um, um, you could then be subject to, um, um, uh, legal complaint by, by that business, you know, selective enforcement, enforcement based on content.
The difference is though, is that the, the ant guy, you know, the bug doctor, whatever he is, he, they, he just plas-, he makes these homemade signs and puts them all over, all over the balcony uh, without any regard to who the property owners are. It's just a busy intersection. And they're staked in the ground. They are temporary signs. They're not removed. You know, the event is ongoing. I mean, we've got Jazzercise, college pro painters, uh.
Really buys houses?
Yes, the person that buys the houses. I mean, gosh, that guy's gotta be.
Yeah, we bought houses.
I'm kind of intrigued by the notion.
I guess the except, I can't think of many exceptions that are, are fine in my opinion. Young guys, but I guess I'd like to just outright prohibit them.
Well, I'm, what I'm, I'm, I'm in, I'm curious is that if the real estate industry primarily relies on A-frame signs, if the city were then to, to, to limit commercial signs in the right of way to A-frame signs, then there may be the ability to, to regulate when they're displayed and get, and kind of maybe, and that might kind of discourage, you know, the student painters sign being out there all summer or something.
I think if you got rid of the, the, the temporary signs shall be attached to a stake, blah, 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 and just require that they be A-frame.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and then put a stipulation in that they be removed, you know, have some guidelines for the removal period.
Well, you, you'd still have to have, um, construction stuff on there because I could take two, two cardboard pieces and make an A-frame out of it.
They have to be, you know, weather resistant material.
Yeah, right. You would still have to do that. But yeah, actually I think that's, that would reduce a lot of, of things.
Yeah. So I, I, I think that might be kind of where we'll explore, if that makes sense, to see if we can go with, uh, with, with, with A-frame and materials and restrict the display period, that that might be the way to do it. If, if there's a way at all, that might be the path.
Are garage sale, are yard sales signs covered in this section?
We're into that next.
That's different.
Yes.
So, so the other thing.
Oh, oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait. Oh, it would, under that scenario, thank you for, for asking that. Under that scenario, you could have a garage sale sign if it was an A-frame sign.
Nothing else.
But, but nothing else. Now, the reality of A-frame signs is, is not, you know, city, the sign enforcement on Monday. So, you know, the, the cardboard boxes with the signs on them and all that stuff pops up on Friday and they're gone on Sunday. Uh, so, but, but under that scenario, the only kinds of garage sale or yard sale signs that would be permitted in the right of way would be ones that were A-frame that met the criteria.
So I'd like to propose a couple of things. I still like, oh, I'm sorry, Brian.
It's just the only other type of sign that I've seen that's generally accepted in the community. They're a little bit of an eyesore, but I think our community values generally.
They are an eyes, they are an eyesore. They get put on, they get, they get plastered to our decorative light fixtures.
Which is illegal.
The tape will, the tape pulls the paint off. I just pulled a sign off of our, one of our entry signs by Martin Airfield and it was duct tape and it took, took the paint out of it. Um, they put, they staple them to telephone poles, which is a hazard for the util-, I mean, it's a hazard for the utility companies. Um, uh, in the way the code is written now, they are, they're temporary, temporary signs are not allowed in the right of way and they're not allowed to be put on poles. Um, they happen, you know, they get put up on a Friday for the Saturday yard sales, Sunday yard sales. Uh, and then our public works crew turn the mics off, goes around, well, it's allowed. And they, they just, they get rid of them. They see them, they get rid of them.
Can you not, is it just not normal to, to say, well, it's a hundred dollar fine and the police are gonna come give you a ticket if you, if you have them out? Is that just not something that's done or is that something the city, the police department doesn't wanna mess with or? I'm just, I'm just questioning because I have, it seems like that's the easy way on the weekends. You know, you have, if there's a cop out there and he sees a sign, then he's got, you know, okay, we, we won't talk about how many tickets are required to, to write, but that would be a good way to make money for your department to help police these issues.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I don't know if there's a, if we have ordinance regarding that, but I, I mean, you're not supposed to park your car on the street for over a certain number of hours and I can, or you park your trailer in the street and I can tell you in the summertime, you know, it happens and it doesn't get enforced.
Oh, that parking backwards on the street, that drives me nuts.
Okay, so I'm, I'm inclined to, to explore the notion of temporary commercial signs in the right of way if they are A-frame with durable materials, limited duration. Um, um, probably, um, the same permission, provision that we talked about and that would require a permit.
Yes.
Now, we'll see what.
Brian have another comment and then I was gonna say something else.
Yeah. Just wanted to clarify what we'd like to do with, with yard sales plans since they seem to be the most common type of sign. I've heard your concern. It sounds like it's a big, big nuisance, big problem.
They are a nuisance.
It's something that many in our community probably wish to continue to do, but so we, but we wanna regulate in a way that's, that's prevents them from being a nuisance, but still allows them form of advertising. Is A-frame the right way to go or do we want to draw a solid, to allow that?
A-frame's gonna be hard for us.
So this is my proposal to city council. If we do this A-frame, do the city invest in, I don't know, thirty A-frame signs that say garage sale or have other messages that are common and some, and people can come and borrow them or maybe rent them for ten bucks for the weekend or something from the city. And then that way we're saying, okay, this is their regulation. We know you don't have one. You can come to the city. We have some we can, that you use.
That's a good idea.
It's actually a very good idea. I like that a lot.
Some cities, some cities do that with respect to the land use signs. They have a, a stock of them and if you have to do an advertisement, you can come and pick one up and put your, the, the, the content on and go post it. Yeah, so that might be a way. It also kind of gives an advantage in that it kind of, they're a uniform kind of thing and so people know what to see. Oh, I see this. Okay, I got it. And this is an authorized agent's deal. Um.
We could have.
Okay, so now, let's go to, um, temporary signs on private property. Okay, now, and the focus primarily on commercial signs. So you could have a temporary sign on your property saying garage sale here. You could have a temporary sign that's a banner type sign that says grand opening. You could have a temporary sign that is one of those things that's kind of on a pole and looks like a feather and blows and flutters. Um, there, um, you could have a sandwich board sign. Now, if you have a sandwich board sign and you're over in a shopping center or something like that, that's gonna be on private property if it's anywhere near, say, the entrance of the building in all likelihood. But if you have a sandwich board sign and you're, say, in the downtown mixed-use district where the policies encourage businesses to be right up against the curb, there may not be a place on private property for a temporary sign. So like Rogers, for instance, if they were gonna have a temporary sign out front, it's a practical matter. The only place it's gonna be is in the right of way. So that's why I kept, that's why I'm on, on sandwich board signs because this is where kind of the lines get blurred and stuff a little bit. And we said earlier that you, it's okay to limit and signs can't be in the road and they can't be in the sidewalk and they can't be this and they can't be that. Can a sandwich piece or sign be allowed if there's enough room for pedestrians to get around it and it's, and it's safe and it's made of durable material and it's within X feet of the entrance to the, to the building? Is that something that, that can and should be permitted if it doesn't open up hand to hand as box?
I think we decided before that we will find that. John enlightened us of our existing problems. I know that he's had some that have multiple. I think we limited the power as.
Yeah, we didn't want a whole bunch of them.
As campus sharing, but yeah, I don't, I don't think.
Like one per business?
Yeah, well, one per street side because we've got one of those fast food marts that has two street signs. So they oughta have one on each side. They oughta be allowed to have one on each side, but not two on one side.
Yeah, and that's a good example of a, that convenience store. I mean, we've all seen the convenience stores that have, the buildings plastered with signs and then they've got the Lotto sign and they've got the Corona sign and they've got, I mean, you know, it can get out of hand real quickly, so.
So I think if we regulate it, again, to the quality, the size, certain things so that they're more uniform. But then the other thought that I had is, you know, and, and location where they can be put. So, so, you know, if Rogers has, and I don't know if there's enough room, but has a couple of tables outside, well, maybe that precludes because now there's no room for people on the sidewalk for them to also have a neighbor sign. But if they don't have that or that particular day they take the tables inside, well, now they, that day they might have room for the, for the sign.
Well, and that, that footage from the front door thing, it has to be variable too because part of our new commercial along is either, either it can be all the way up or it can be further back away from the street. And I'll just use United Country's office as an example. You know, we've got parking in front and so when we put the sandwich board sign out for the black cup, it needs to be on the street and we're nowhere near, near the street. So we're not unique. There is other places that are like us, so. You know, if you do do a, a thing, it just needs to be, you know, obviously you wouldn't want the business to be a hundred feet away or something, but, oh, maybe even then. Andy's is a hundred feet from the street, isn't it?
I think maybe along the frontage of the business as opposed to, you know, along the business of the frontage. So that would cover, you know, the black cup or Andy's. Um, you know, I know that in Walla Walla, we had a, you know, I don't know what it's now, but we define what they call like a furniture zone on the street, which is like right adjacent to the curb where there's some garbage cans that might be city owned. There could be benches. Uh, and that's where we, where it, once upon a time said, okay, four signs can go in the furniture zone.
I like that, that furniture zone.
So it kept, it kept the, the walkway, the six foot walkway clear.
Yeah, and that's, that is our long-term intent. We, we plan on buying, you know, street furniture, benches and garbage cans and, and have that in line with where the trees and the lights are. So that makes, that would be a good spot.
Yep.
Now, not all portable signs are A-frame signs. I noticed on my way here tonight in downtown Walla Walla that on the, the main street there is a kind of a, a, it looks like it's, um, uh, like steel angle iron or something that was welded together, but it's on a base with, with rollers. And so it creates a frame for about a, maybe a three, two by three or three by four sign that kind of hangs in there and they roll, it looks like they roll it out in the morning and then they roll it back in at night. So it's not an A-frame sign, but it's certainly durable.
My, my concern, sorry, my concern with different signs that are not necessarily the A-frame sign, that the, uh, the convenience store here has a sign that it has two four metal feet that come out from the base. And if that sign gets turned at all, or even if it's just straight perpendicular, it, it can be a tripping hazard. Especially at nine.
That's why I was gonna say, I don't have a problem with, with saying only A-frame signs because honestly they are, and, you know, the blind, the blind lady who tripped over the A-frame sign, you know, I, I don't know. Maybe we oughta ask some, some disabled people with blind, with sight issues. Maybe an A-frame sign isn't the best way to go. But it seems to me like it's the easiest one to be able to figure out that it's there.
Yeah, with, with the lady that tripped, the blind lady, this was on a route that she walked all the time and she used a cane. She's totally blind. And so, uh, it was, the, the A-frame sign was placed within the pedestrian pathway that she had learned to walk. And so she was not being as cautious as she normally would be and missed it and tripped over it. So.
A, a couple of other questions. Codes, almost every code I've seen allows, um, businesses to have banners. And if you like drive from downtown to Walla Walla, you can see just about every business has a, a banner on it. But a lot of codes have provisions that limit the duration of a banner. Like each business can display a banner for up to a hundred and twenty days a year. And as I was thinking about that, I was thinking, how would you ever enforce that? Who would be the one that goes around and checks the boxes and then says, well, let you know you're at a hundred and ten?
The only instance where I can see, I mean, you have temporary signs on, on commercial property, um, with like the windshield doctor down here. They, they have a, I guess it's a, a banner type material that is attached to the building. That it was their first sign that went up, I think intentionally as temporary and it's been there for two years. And it, this is not, not very attractive. A permit's not required for it.
Well, I would think the Honda dealership would be the one that could abuse any of this the, the most. I mean, I, I grew up in dealerships. I, I spent twenty-three years out of Ford dealership. So I remember seeing all the different kinds of quickie banners and the temporary garbage, you know, balloons and streamers and, you know, big old huge balloons hanging in the air, you know. They can really go nuts with some of their stuff. And are you gonna try and, and deal with that or not? I mean, that's.
And I was thinking about that. That's a really good question. I was thinking about that and I was thinking, this is just personal for me. I would, I would, I think that the character of, of a downtown area can be defined or significantly affected by the regulation or lack thereof of signs. And I can think of some downtowns that, you know, have some, you know, thoughtful sign codes and, and the character of the downtown is greatly enhanced. Uh, Bay Ridge Island or Winslow, for instance, is an example where they have really a thoughtful sign code and you just kind of notice that something's different when you're walking around. For me, I can't say that whether there was one less or one more sign at the Fred Meyer's or the Home Depot or anything, that would make a single. at the Fred Meyer's, or the Home Depot, or anything that would make a single bit of difference. And if I was gonna pick and choose unlimited resources, fine, you know, if that's, if that's how you wanna run your business, run your business that way, but I would be more concerned about the downtown, but that's just, those are personal values.
Strike me if I'm wrong, the two of you, or do you work with them too? That, uh, doesn't Walla Walla have a different sign code for downtown than they do for Isaac's? So it's not unusual, and it wouldn't be wrong for us to do the same thing, with our proposed downtown area compared to someplace else.
Yep, and, 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 and you can make distinctions based on, on, on zones and districts, and so you could have different sign code. In fact, the, as written right now, it says, signs in the downtown mixed-use zone has to comply with the design standards. Now, there might not be a lot in the design standards, but that, you know, there's not design standards that are comparable in the, in the general commercial zone.
If I remember correctly, the, our original proposal prohibited, like, the, the banners, and the flat, you know, the blow-up stuff on, in the downtown mixed-use. And I think that was driven by the Tapatio, the, uh, not the Tapatio, that's a hot sauce. What's the Mexican store up there?
Oh, yeah, on, on Rose.
On Rose, and they had, now granted, they were in the little planting strip, but they had the streamers that were on, on the pole, and they had flat, yeah, that were, and it, and then they had, they had those little, uh, robots for some cellphone company they were selling, and it was, it was pretty tacky. They had a lot of temporary stuff all over the place.
Yeah.
Okay.
And you're right, it was tacky?
So basically, you just talked to them, and they removed that voluntarily, or?
Uh, no, I think if they just, they probably wore out and blew away. They probably are in somebody's yard somewhere, and they, they never replaced them.
I remember one of those vertical flags was obstructing the railroad crossing signal.
Yeah, I, I think we did contact them about that at one point.
Yeah, 'cause there are provisions that say that you can't have signs that block other signs that.
Like a railroad cross.
Yeah, yeah, things like that.
Um, here's a, here's a question, and this comes to mind because that business has applied for a sign, a wall-mounted sign, uh, that is sponsored by Pepsi. So, they're gonna have the U-Haul business, say, U-Haul on it, I'm assuming, and then it'll probably have, you know, Pepsi on it. You see that at sport complexes, Little League fields and stuff. Is that, if you, is that off-site premise advertising, or? I mean, they're a convenience store too, so they probably sell Pepsi products, obviously. Is there a way to regulate that, or would that?
There, there are. Do we have a cap on the amount of wall they can cover on their store?
Well, we, we, we did cover that originally, and I don't know if that's followed through.
Yeah, yeah, so you have kind of an area budget, so that, that, that's one way. There, there's some things that are clearer than others. You can't, for instance, you know, signs are accessory to a use, so you can't erect, put a sign on, in a vacant lot and have it be a permanent sign, for instance. So, you know, you can't do, you can't do that. But in the case of a store, you know, if, you know, you can have a Carhartt sign if you want, or, or, um, a Budweiser sign, or whatever, so yeah, you could do that, but that just counts against whatever your, your allotment. But it can't, on the other hand, it can't be, um, a sign to advertise somebody else's business. So there'll be kind of things that are clearer than things that are kind of fuzzy.
Okay.
I wanna ask you about, to be mindful of time, I wanna check on a couple more things, and this is, we're gonna have, look at this more than one. With respect to the permanent signs, there's, there's a, a couple of basic categories. Wall signs and facade signs, signs that are attached to the building. And there tend to be regulations that say they can't be on the roof, and they can't extend above the E-line or whatever. But you could have signs that are attached flush to the wall, um, that's one kind. But there, there's more than that, there's also projecting signs or perpendicular signs that can extend out, and that's an example of where allowances are made. Or it can be over the sidewalk, for instance, but it has to have a certain clearance and be a certain distance from the, from the edge of the curb. So there can be projecting signs, there can also be awning signs, where there's an, an awning, but there's a commercial message on the awning. So there's, and, or you can even have a sign that's painted right onto the building. And then the, you get kind of, the gray areas become, when is it a sign, and when is it a mural? And if it's a, if it's a, a picture of, um, you know, settlers, then that might be a mural and not a sign, and therefore not regulated.
About an octopus.
But, yeah, but then, yeah, you get into some gray areas. Or what if one of the settlers is drinking a Coke? Or has an Apple computer, or, or something like that, or is riding a Harley? So you, you get into some, you can get into gray, so we have wall signs. Then the other category tends to be freestanding, which can be typically pole or monument signs. I noticed, for instance, I think I saw this, that, that, that pole signs were permitted in the downtown mixed-use district, and so as an example, I looked at it, I said, huh. If the goal is to kind of push buildings to the front, we really wanna be permitting pole signs and things like that, which might be a reason for someone to push their thing back. If I can have a nice big pole sign, and there's just right down the street here, there's several businesses that, that do have pole signs. And they have kind of, you know, a little bit of space to work with, and they kind of, you know, scrunch them in here or there. So, we've got those kinds of, of considerations. I kind of arbitrarily created another class of sign, because this has come up a whole bunch of times, which is community message board signs that have changing content, either, you know, by hand, or more frequently electronically. And there's an example right up on, what, Twelfth and, what, what is that, Lampredi or whatever, the church?
No, the arch.
The arch.
And the credit union has one too.
Yeah, nice, you know, attractive monument signs, but the, you know, the message, you know, changes, so you can have, so this one really focuses on the, the non-commercial content, once again, like the City Hall has one.
Yep.
But then the credit union has one, and that is a commercial content. So you could actually have a, from on a commercial side, you could have a pole sign that has changing message, you could have a monument, and I know some communities gone down and said, we're only gonna allow changing messages on monument signs and not pole signs, or this, or this, or this, or this, or this, or what about signs that are seventy-five feet up in the air, that you can see that over by the freeway, that you can see forever? So there's a bunch of things in here, and I just wanted to check to see, kind of, I know that you spent some time in this area, and I wanted to get a, make sure I understood kind of what are the things that were most important in your, that came out of the previous discussions.
I think we addressed the wall, freestanding, pole, monument, but message board sign, the brightness and that, and then, and then display. I think we've gone through all of them.
Did you talk about projecting signs previously, projecting?
Yes, and, and to the right-of-way.
Yeah, perpendicular signs.
So I think that, well, yeah, I don't remember.
A projector.
No, no, projecting, like the sign is.
Hang it over the, hang it over the sidewalk, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, we did.
Yeah, we, I mean, we have Andy's sign hangs over the sidewalk a little bit. We've approved the Beeline sign to hang over the sidewalk, which.
Rogers hangs over the sidewalk a little bit.
Yeah, Rogers does, I think.
So, but I think we had a certain foot off the ground that they, that they.
Yes, and they're trying to generate some standards like eight feet.
It's a building code requirement.
Yeah, the building code.
Yeah, yeah, and they, there's a code requirements on how they're attaching things. One of the areas I was less clear of is on the residential zones. Because typically, you don't see many signs permitted in residential zones. Now, I can think of a couple of exceptions. You had a subdivision, you know, having a monument sign or something at every entrance. Um, if you had a multifamily development, I could see having signs at the entrance of, back, coming down Twelfth. I drove by several apartments that had either a sign on the building, or a pole sign, or something like that, so I could see that. But my sense was that you were, your interest was in permitting more kinds of signs in the residential area than that, so I wanted to check in and, and have you, and share with me what your discussions were there on.
I don't remember talking about that, do you guys?
Talked a little bit, I remember thinking about, you know, the person that, yes, the piano lesson.
We have a barber shop too.
Home-based business.
Home-based business, but I don't remember now what, if we ended up coming to some conclusion or nothing.
Yeah, but is that, are, are, is that even the same as talking about like Garrison Creek Heights monument sign? No one in Garrison Creek.
We had, we had a provision in there to allow for signage in the residential area, and I think it was to allow for the guy that maybe collected old gas station signs, or. I mean, I don't, it's more artwork than really a sign, but they were probably once a sign, you know, at one point. I don't know if it's necessary.
Yeah, kind of go back to if it's not a nuisance, why do we use that approach?
Well, I, I think though that.
Do we have a nuisance issue on that area?
No.
Well, I would, I would think we'd still want to regulate probably size and placement.
I think for home occupations, we would want to limit them to, you know.
And, and, and on home occupations, I think we'd be back to playing the game of that, that saying things like, a residence can have, each, each residence can have a wall-mounted sign not to exceed this, but you can't limit it to, say, home businesses and B&amp;Bs. So.
So two square foot, is that our, our?
Why can't you limit it? It's a business.
But you can't, you can't treat some, it goes back to the, to the notion of the content neutrality, and what's the legitimate government interest in singling out B&amp;Bs or things? So you could say.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
You could say that you, you could have a two-foot sign, or three-foot, or whatever it is, flush-mounted with a commercial message. Most people aren't gonna do it. But if somebody then wanted to have a sign to advertise their home business, they could. If they wanted to have a sign, a thing to advertise their, their B&amp;B, they could.
Or their vacation rental, but it would have to be mounted on the building, non-illuminated, that sort of thing.
Yes, yes, yeah, so you can set, you know, all those conditions on it, but you can't based on content of it, so. I, I know, I know communities have dealt with that, because they wanted to be able to have bed and breakfast, to have the signs and stuff. They wrote it in such a way that every others could have the same thing. They haven't had a problem, because by and large, most people don't wanna put a sign on their house. And if somebody wanted to put a sign on it that said, in case you missed it, I really think that Monty is a jerk, that's, that's, they can still do that as a part of their.
Now he's a jerk?
Can, can we also predicate those home business signs on having a, uh, I don't know, I guess, an approved or whatever, business, home business? I mean, don't they have to have some kind of approval to have a home business?
Yeah, you would have to have a business license with the city in order to advertise a home business.
You know, you, Joe, who's a mechanic and wants to fix cars in his house, and he wants to have Joe's Garage on there, but maybe that's not a business that's permitted in his house. And so he can't have his signed Joe's Garage, because that's not a permitted business in his house.
Right.
It's a parody, though. You know, what if, what if I put Joe's Garage over the top of my garage, just for fun?
Well, but then that, that wouldn't really be a business, I mean. That's, that's now a, a business. It's just your personal.
Video secrecy.
Yeah, the slippery slope is the, the regulating the, the, the content.
So it sounds like it'd be the easiest to do, to have residential commercial dealt with through the building permit, or the business permit, yeah, time. So, you know, and that should be part of the application of having a, a residential business is, is talking to them about signage and stuff.
Now, I, there's, there's a path that some cities are going down, and that, that path may enable that. What some cities have done is, because they can't regulate real estate signs, because you'd have to read the sign to know that it was a real estate sign, they have adopted regulations for signs on properties that have, um, um, signs that, properties that have, um, um, for, um, um, property for sale or lease. So they're not regulating the real estate sign, they're regulating properties that are for sale or lease. Now, to me, I would kind of call that a chicken. But that's the path that they've gone down, so they've said that on properties that are for sale or lease, you can have a temporary sign up to this size. And so basically, then they ended up regulating onsite real estate signs that way. Now, if you could do that and get away with it, then maybe you could, instead of regulating B&amp;B signs, you could regulate properties that have a home business. I don't know, but we can.
Sounds to me like they're kind of, like they're actually going a little further than they need to, because our temporary sign code has got to regulate temporary signs, and our permanent sign code's got to regulate term permanent signs. So it seems like they've kind of stretched out where it was unnecessary.
Tried a different, yeah.
Yeah. So, and, and a B&amp;B or an air, a bed and breakfast is gonna be a permanent sign on the building, or no sign at all. So, and that's kind of the thing, if you've already regulated temporary commercial signs, they'll only be temporary. Where, you know, so that doesn't do them any good, but a temporary sign out in the street, you know.
Well, they could. Well, no, I mean, I guess they could if they got an A-frame sign, and they removed it every night, and they brought it back in, and put it out in the morning. I mean.
Then they would be in compliance.
Yeah.
So, but if they want to attach it to the house, or, you know, something like that.
I think we could get by with requiring that they have an active business license, though I, I.
I agree.
I know.
Well, do they have to have one for a B&amp;B?
You, yeah, you, you would have to have a business.
Still property or B&amp;B?
Yep, any vacation rentals, your, if you're a business.
Okay, let me touch on one other thing, and then switch gears here for the last minutes. There is one other little thing. We have a, a new zoning district, the university district. And the, um, and, 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 and then that's an area where some of this also might kind of get blurred, because you could argue that many, if not most, of the signs are signs that do not have a commercial message. Some of them may fall into the exempt category. Some of the signs on the university campus, for instance, one of the other kind of standard provisions is that regulated signs are signs that are visible from the road, sidewalk, or public place, or something like that. So if you have a sign on the interior of the campus, you may not be able to see it, and therefore it may not be regulated. So, and, and it wasn't clear to me with all this craziness that we just talked about, what to do with, with, um, signs on the university campus. what to do with, with, um, signs on the university campus. And it wouldn't just be the university because you could then have schools and some other institutions. My, my, my instinct said, well, if you have a master sign plan, then you're probably just fine. And if the master sign plan is approved, then the university or the school could administer within that approved plan and probably everything would be fine. So I asked municipal research and services center if the, if the, you know, how the city might deal with, can the city regulate signs on the university campus? And conversely, can the city defer to the university and let the university deal with it? And they came back and said, yes, and we did some quick checking around. And at the other universities and things around the, the state, they all have master sign plans that, that are approved and they just use that. I said, oh, what about that? So, um, that's another argument for either having a, a campus master plan that includes signage in there because the university, it's on university property and the university could, could, could deal with it. The city wouldn't have to. Or in the absence of an approved master plan for the campus, the university could have at least a, um, a sign plan that's approved. And, and, and that would cover it. And the only question then is, is in the absence of some kind of master plan or something, what to do? And as long as there's not a commercial message, it's all probably fine. So I don't know if there's any need for the university on the campus to have signs with commercial messages that would be visible from the streets and sidewalks and things. So that, that might be the one area where there might be an issue. But I, it's, I, my sense is, is that other communities have found a way to do it and it's not a problem.
Well, we don't have a problem right now with their signs. In fact, I think you guys in the last four or five years have replaced a lot of your signage. They kind of have a consistent sign program, their monument base. Most of them are not very high off the ground. And I don't know that I can think of any, you may, I think you have some sort of wayfinding that might, in certain parts of campus that might direct you to, uh, buildings that, you know.
I was more concerned about opening up Pandora's Box. Well, if the university gets to do it, then we get to do it. But I think that as long as it's within, especially now since there's a special zone and you can regulate within a, a zone, I think it's going to be just fine. And the university can do what they want to do and.
I, I almost think you, I think you could get by with probably exempting them from, from.
At, at least up to the point of non-commercial signs, I think you could.
Right.
Yeah, I, I think you're just fine.
Yeah.
It's just that, I, I don't know why you'd want to have a commercial message, but then you would.
Yeah, so.
I mean, it's the bookstore might be an example.
The bookstore is possible, but.
Uh, but I don't know if it's on the campus or if it's in the downtown mixed use zone, but.
It is our building.
Both actually.
Was that?
Both actually. Yeah, it is in the downtown mixed use zone, but it's campus property.
Yeah, it's a kind of interesting combination there.
Yeah. They own everything up to Forest Street and almost all the way back to Ash, so, uh.
Well, university property, the university owned property that is not within the boundaries, the designated boundaries of the campus is subject to whatever regulations in that zoning district. So if it's not at the campuses in downtown mixed use, it would be subject to downtown mixed use and that would be just fine. So, and, and look, I'm not trying to create a problem. I was just trying to make sure that we weren't, by trying to be supportive of the university, creating, throwing the barn door open for somebody else, that doesn't sound like.
Do they have a sign ordinance?
We, we have some intentionality in creating placing signs. I'm not sure that we call it a sign master plan or ordinance, but it's, it's quite carefully regulated. There's a, there's a couple individuals on campus that are approved to, are basically to place signs.
To my knowledge, I don't even think we've ever issued any permits for them. And I don't know that we need to, they're not, you know, they're not structural in terms of they're not hanging on a building, they're not hanging above anything.
Well, and, and internal kind of wayfinding signs tend to be exempt. So, you know, you're, I think by and large, he said, the only thing I could really kind of think of is, is that there might be something with respect to commercial signs, but there's ways to deal with that.
Well, and even their one true commercial structure is the Atlas. They don't even have a sign.
Yeah, they do.
Well, they have a small sign that says Atlas.
What sign?
But it doesn't tell them what it is. I mean, you drive by, you don't know it's a coffee shop or nothing.
So any concerns with the temporary signage for alumni weekend or for the, the weekend of beginning of school?
As long as it's on, on the university property.
Cause we've had some signs that span College Avenue. I don't know if we still do that or not.
Well, we don't have any infrastructure in place now for that.
Okay, so we haven't done that recently.
I think. Huh?
Did it go away with the College Avenue?
Yeah, and so.
Now there's banners right on the post, on the land posts.
And they, they, we have informally allowed them to use, the university to use the light posts for their, their banners, only in the university district along their frontages. Once you get north on Whitman, even though they own properties in south, excuse me, north of Whitman and south of Fourth, those, they are not allowed to use those light posts. We do need to develop a formal agreement and I talked to George Bennett about it when they first started using them, but.
And, and there's a kind of a placeholder language in the regulations that enables, um, um, a kind of a, a signage to be on, on utility foals in certain districts if it's part of a signage plan. Cause you might see, you know, like down, some, the downtown associations might have a series of signs in the downtown area or the university might, or something like that. But what you don't want to have is a situation where individual businesses start going out and hanging signs.
Yeah, we, we need to address that because, um, and right now the administration and the mayor are not, we're not in a position to manage a program like what the downtown foundation does for Walla Walla's banners. Um, they manage that. So any nonprofit can advertise an event. They go to the downtown foundation, they, they buy the banners, the, the, the event holder buys the banners. And they pay the downtown foundation for each banner to be installed and they manage the whole. I mean, it's a very, there's a lot of events in this valley and so it's a very, uh, time consuming, uh, process. Uh, and we just don't have the staff to manage a program like that. So we're, we are outside of, aside from the university. Um, and that's why we need to get something in place and writing with the university because we don't want to be approached by another, say nonprofit that may want to advertise on the rest of our banners. Um, because we don't have the capacity to manage a program like that. We're restricting, all of the other light posts are for city owned, city sponsored events only. And so we, we need to clean that up a little bit.
So can we though, and I don't know exactly where the university district is, but do you have a stipulation that if it is something that obviously has a commercial purpose that they need to then follow? I, I guess it's the downtown, uh, district. Cause you know, the DX is university owned, definitely a commercial business. The bookstore, I could say it's a commercial business and even probably now the coffee house.
Yeah.
Is Atlas is a commercial business so that they could at least, you know, even though it's part of the university that they do need to then need the.
They're not part of the university district. Those, the Atlas is in the downtown mixed use, the DX, uh, the Christian, all the bookstore, you know.
Even the bookstore?
Yeah, it, we've, if you remember in the comp plan process, we put a boundary around the university. And so in order to be in that district, it has to be a university, you know, an educational purpose, basically. So if they buy outside of that and, uh, they, they can't even, the university cannot expand their university activities outside of that boundary without going through a public process. They can buy property all they want, um, but they need to use it for the uses that are allowed in the downtown mixed use. So for instance, there, there's a property that the university is considering purchasing right now and I won't tell you what it is. But, um, they, the university faculty came to us and said, we're thinking about buying this. And these are the uses that we want. We're not, we're not going to teach in this building, but we want, we might have faculty in there or, um, and would that be okay? And we're like, yep, that's fine. As long as it's, you know, a business sort of related activity and not an educational purpose, then there's no issue there.
My other question is, so obviously we have the university and they're in this special district. Do we have also special districts for the other schools, public schools and private schools?
There.
Or is there then under the, I don't know, conditional use permit or something? Is there some requirement or regulation then on their signs?
Yeah, um, they're, right, the way it's written now is because they're not a part of a special district. They're a permitted use, actually permitted use can, you know, through a conditional use permit in different zoning districts.
Are they?
And the, 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 um.
I thought we left it as a public reserve zone for the schools and stuff. Or we're not calling it public reserve anymore.
Oh, public, uh.
Public use.
Uh, yeah, public use, public use.
So they are in a different zoning district.
But there are no regulations right now as written for public use. Signs that are like for internal circulation and things like that are, are exempt. And, you know, they may be eligible to have things like a, a reader board sign that says parent teacher conferences on Monday, some things like that. But if we were going to then have, you know, we could potentially have comparable provisions for the, for those in the, in the public use zone. Um, because there's a, a basis then because it's a different zone.
Yeah, and, and I don't know, I mean, obviously we're talking about signs. So I, most of these institutions have some sort of sign. I don't know if, if we need to have some regulations so that in case one of them tries to go overboard with signs or whether it's, we just let them be.
Well, according to this thing in here that I've read already, that, uh, they're saying that basically anything that's owned by and done by the city, um, there, it's an exemption anyway. So the public schools are basically owned by the public city, which means they're exempt. They pretty much can do what they want.
Well, it's not really owned by the city, it's public.
It's a different public organization.
But then there's Wawa and Rogers and then there's going to be the other Christian school that's going to be in the city here soon.
So I, I would suggest that we treat them similar to some, some of the commercial, like, I mean, it, it's, it's becoming more common for schools to have these digital reader boards like we have out in front of city hall, which I think are hideous and I can't believe we have one in front of city hall, but anyhow.
But things like they can have one, you can't have four and stuff like that.
Treat them the same as, as other commercial businesses, um, within reason, you know, I mean.
And they're flashing, you don't want them to flash in their signs and the brightness needs to be controlled. I agree and some of that stuff does. I tell you, there's some of that stuff, sometimes you go by that church on, the village church on 12th and that sign's so bright, I don't even want to look that way.
Well, and remember when, when the, when the, uh, Gospel Outreach put their sign out.
Theirs is horrible.
It, it was, they had it way too bright, they toned it down. And then I, if, I mean, I'm not out here at 11 o'clock at night, but, um, I, we asked them to turn it off at night after a certain timeframe. But in, in the, one of the drafts we had, we, and I need to, I don't remember, I remember seeing it in here, but we wanted to regulate, uh, if you're within a certain distance of the residential district, the sign needs to go off at a certain time.
I think you're right. I think we'd have that.
And, and we would apply that same rule to a school district if they're, and you know, a lot of schools are going to be, you know, within a hundred feet of a neighborhood.
Yeah, they're going to be in residential district.
Okay, well, and switch gears, there's going to be something back to Brian, nobody asked. Does the school, have the university have an interest in having banners over College Avenue in the future?
I'm, I'm not aware of that. I just know he used to ask and I was curious if that was still considered a reasonable use or not.
What would be the process if they wanted to do that?
Um. We would just need to work with the, I think it would be a special event banner. I, I don't, I don't think we'd be against it. I think we need to get the infrastructure in place. So if that's a desire, I, I, I believe that the infrastructure is gone, but I could be wrong.
And there's, and there's a couple of different ways that it could be done. One is a right of way use permit or there's also provisions to allow temporary signs in conjunction with an approved special event. And so if the event is something that's been approved, then part of the approval process could include you have a banner or some other things.
Yeah.
I think you are right. I think the poles that they used to use aren't even there anymore.
Yeah, I don't think they are. And, um, so we should probably have that discussion if, if that's a desire to get that infrastructure back in place. It would probably be something that the university would, would probably front the infrastructure and then we just would probably do like a right of way permit anytime they were going to put them up across the street and.
Yeah, I get, I'm not aware of anything in particular. Do, do Wagner, her office would be the only office that would do something like that for alumni weekend?
No, that's a good idea. I mean, it, for one thing, it really brings awareness to the community of what's going on. You know, you put it up a week before, I mean, Whitman does it. They do it across second and they have a couple of other streets within their kind of campus area where they do it. And I think, I think it's a great way to draw attention to what's going on on the weekend. A car show would be a perfect example to get it up a couple days before. I think it'd be a great idea.
It sounds like we have a method for that, so.
Yep, that's good for me. Okay, I want to, um, just very briefly, um, talk about one other item and then before our edges explode, um, get out of here. And then we're going to do some, obviously some more work on the signs. Um, um, and then we'll, um, um, bring it back and continue to talk. Ultimately, it's going to be to a point where it's going to be as good as we can and then it's going to be into the hands of the attorney. But, um, um, I want to talk for just a minute about the other item, which is the unified development code. And just to kind of restate what it is that, that we're working toward. Yeah, historically this city and most cities have had the regulations of government development in four or five or six different chapters of their municipal code. And, um, um, and that came about largely because most of our regulations were going to conceive and structured and written kind of prior to today's technology with word processing and, and all the software and things like that. So when, um, um, regulations were adopted, it was typically in the form of a, of a freestanding ordinance. So there would be an ordinance regulating signs or an ordinance regulating subdivisions or ordinance regulating critical areas. And because each ordinance was a freestanding one and cities would save up money and, and when they had saved enough money, they could maybe hire somebody who could modify and take all those ordinances and put them together in some kind of book form where you could refer to them. And, you know, so that, that was kind of helpful. But there are still counties, for instance, that don't have codes or have all their ordinances all together in one place. They have a big stack of ordinances. And you have to kind of look through the ordinances, can you do this? I don't know. I, I think it's not an ordinance on that. So, so technology has made it easier for us to, to do some things, but most codes tend to be written in such a way, how they came about, there's a tremendous amount of repetition. There's provisions that the same provisions are repeated time and time and time and time again. And, and, which is very inefficient. But every time you, you duplicate something or it's almost the same, there's chances for little errors and inconsistencies to creep in. or it's almost the same, there's chances for little errors and inconsistencies to creep in. Codes tend to have a lot of different procedures in them, which also increases the chances for errors. Um, I am trying to help one city right now, they have 12 different procedures for approving permits. And they can never keep track of them, they always get confused, and they're frequently making mistakes and having to do things over. And you don't need 12 different ways to do something, three or four maybe, but not 12. Um, and and one of the other big challenges is it is hard to find things. If things are in four or five or six different titles, where do you find some things? Now, you have a pretty good idea a lot of the time, but interestingly enough, as I do some word research on sign codes, I didn't always find it in zoning code. Sometimes it was in the building code, for instance. And you have to, and if you, like, John, for instance, if you've worked with a code a long time, you know where it is and on and on and on. It's second nature to you, but nobody else does. So, um, the, what we've been working toward is the notion of a unified code. So instead of five different chapters, we have one chapter. And we have one table of contents, we have one set of procedures. And um we have, we say something once, not five times. And things are integrated. And especially, it's easy to search for things. So if you want to know what the regulations for accessory dwelling units are, for instance, instead of trying to remember now, is that in the zoning code or is that in some development standards? Or is that over here, is that over here? You can do something like type in accessory dwelling units and you'll get to see immediately what the provisions are. So that's what we're working toward. And what the that you you received before the meeting was the first draft of what the unified code looks like and how all the pieces are coming together. So John's has a notebook there in front of him, I have one here, where, and it's, it's single-sided, so it's half this thick. But this is five different chapters of the municipal code now that's all together in one place. And so as you get a chance, if you want to just look through it to see how it's structured, you'll see that things like all the administrative provisions are together, all the procedural things are together, all the things about what uses are permitted together, the different standards are together. And so hopefully they're easier to find things, it's easier to use, hopefully it's easier to read, hopefully it will get smaller in 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 volume. So we wanted to just to to alert you to that, we're going to kind of keep working on it. And so as we've been talking about pieces like accessory dwelling units and subdivisions and home businesses, it all goes in here. So at a point, you're going to get to see all the pieces fit together. So wanted to alert you to that, and as you have a chance, start to kind of thumb through it. We're going to keep updating it and updating it and keep looking for ways to streamline and revise. Ultimately, at the end of the day, um, it it I think will be a a significant improvement. It may take a while to get used to, especially for John, he might in the beginning just hate it because it's not where things used to be and it might just bug him for a while. But after a bit, he might find that if I tweak this a little bit and I tweak this a little bit, then he'll come to love it. Because he can now much more easily find things, explain things, and other people can access things. And he doesn't have to be the keeper of all the knowledge. So Carolyn or somebody else can become familiar with it and dit, 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 and it becomes way more accessible for folks. And so that's what we're working toward, that's what you have in front of you, and and that's what this is. John and I are going to spend some time tomorrow where we're going to just go through this.
Time, we're out of time.
Okay, start to keep working on it. We're done. Thank you. Anything else, John?
Uh, I don't think so.
Anything else, commission? All right, 8:58, we're adjourned, thank you. Thank you for your patience. Signs are just a royal.